We'll take care of the minutes today. And then we'll get right into the ordinances. Number 10. This is a standard purchase agreement for the fire truck. Anything you want to say about it? Assistant Chief? We kind of covered everything. There is to cover about it.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. And then the wording has all been changed. It looks like it. So that's good.
Very.
One, two, three on that. We've already basically approved it. Everyone good?
I'm okay.
All right. So Vinny, can you do three on that?
Yes.
All right. The next two are related. Number 11 and number 12. Brad, would you like to help explain this stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a budget neutral change in the front desk operations that it does not eliminate any positions for anyone that's currently working. As right now, most of those shifts are empty. They're vacant shifts that we haven't been able to fill. A part-time lead position that we have been hiring for for the last several, even last six to nine months, we haven't had any candidates come in, haven't been able to any success in fulfilling that role. So what we're looking to do is also with our current part-time CSR, so our customer service rep, they're continuing to work the night and weekends with this new full-time position. So this change will allow us to build consistency. It's going to increase productivity and we'll gain a more qualified candidate. We also do have one internal candidate with interest. And since we are so short-staffed, would you ask for a one, two, three reading on this?
I talked to Director Chenik about it before he left. And I've been full-on board with this. I was stressing about that position. I think he said it's been open since August, if not longer.
Yeah.
The pay we're offering is nine to 10 bucks. What was the highest you could go on that, Brad?
The highest is like 11, 12.
Yeah. So...
That's with experience.
Right.
And this position is, these two positions, there are going to be people who are interested in parks, recreation, sports management, that kind of stuff. It's going to be almost like a paid internship-type thing to get people... So you'll have qualified people working there. Their team has done a great job at the rec center to make sure that it's contingencies for when these people are not able to come in, when they're sick or something like that. So they really thought of everything. They really thought it all through. I am very excited for this that they came up with. It's going to be worth somebody's while to take this job. And much, much better than what we're offering right now. And I think we'll, like you said, there's already an internal candidate that's ready. And I would really like to go one, two, three on this. The Parks and Rec Department has put so much effort into it, and they know exactly what they're doing. There's no reason for us to give any further input after, you know, if we, if he answers all your questions for it, I would like to get this pushed today, too. So, does anyone have any questions on it?
And then we said it's budget neutral. Could you just explain how? So everybody knows.
Yeah. So right now, all those vacant shifts that we do have, it's six out of seven days a week we have either an opening or closing supervisory position that's just empty. So it's myself or it's our administrative assistant covering those shifts. So they're just shifts that currently, we're not paying whether we're doing it ourselves or doing that to our, you know, our current work.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to take this one. And if no objections, I'll go one, two, three on that. Thank you all. And then this second piece is related to it. In order to add this position, we have to create the positions within the pay structure. So that's what this ordinance 12 is for. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I think you've already explained it.
And that, I highly, highly recommend. That should absolutely be tied to the first one. So whatever happened to the first one, obviously, it should happen to the second one as well. And there was a minor tweak in the note section, if you took a look, because this is, I think, a pay grade three. Traditionally, with the non-union pay ordinance, a pay grade three was treated as part-time. So this just clarified that it's pay grade threes, they're still considered part-time by default unless it specifies the contrary, which this is a contrary.
Yep. Fully noted in there. So everybody follows that, how that goes? Any questions for that or anything? All right. Thank you guys on that. So Jeff will take that. Jan is second. There's one, two, three. Ordinance number 13. Mark, do you want to explain this?
Sure. So there is a little bit of discussion about this. This was a request from Mr. Finley originally, with some input from Ms. Brandt, I think at the last work session. Basically, what this is, it's a very general proposal for a charter amendment to allow council to hold or to meet virtually. Right now, the charter does not specify or give any permission for the city to meet virtually. This amendment, as drafted, would only apply to meetings of council or anytime council as a body wants to meet, whether that's a hearing or an actual regular or special council meeting. Right now, it's drafted where council has to unanimously make a decision that there's either a public safety emergency or a weather emergency. And if that decision's unanimously made, then you can meet virtually. And if council does send this to the voters, the voters do pass it, most likely, I'd recommend passing an ordinance, creating some specific rules for the virtual meetings. So that way, everybody knows what's happening, how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, that kind of deal.
So did you get a date on when this needs to be filed?
March, Friday, March 4th, by 4:00 P.M.
And that would be the May, what, May 2nd, primary?
Whatever the first Tuesday is, 2nd or 3rd.
It's May 2nd. And yeah, so anything else had to be in last month?
Correct.
So all of that's listed. I don't know. Web page ready? You know, all the loveys, all the candidates. So charter review is only the 60-day, not the 90-day?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a cost to doing it on May?
This, this one, I believe there would not be.
Oh, okay.
If you did June, which may or may not happen, depending on, I think that was also mentioned in the last meeting, depending what happens with the General Assembly's potential adjustment to the election schedule, that one would be approximately $12,000 to put on the ballot. But this one, I don't believe there would be a cost other than some nominal amount.
It's not a special election, so...
There's already got to be a...
If you wanted it just for yourself, we have to pay for it every day.
Yeah.
So that's why we try to stay away from special elections.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the way you explained it in the beginning, is that in line with Mr. Finley and Ms. Brandt were talking about as far as Dave being out of town or myself when I couldn't make it because I had surgery?
No.
Are those included in that?
Not the way it's written.
Not the way it's written.
No, it's weather and...
Health emergency.
Like a, I mean, it's got to be a little more than one person.
Yeah.
It's like a pandemic.
Gotcha.
So we could change it to whatever we want the language to be. We could say if we all just unanimously decide that we want to do it virtually, but I think that's a little disingenuous for us to do personally.
I wouldn't agree with it going that way because we're here for the public. So you're not feeling, oh, you're out of town or I'm out of town. What makes our commitment to being here?
And being here in person gives the most access to everyone?
Oh, I agree with that, but I thought that's how it was presented initially.
I did, I did hear that discussion, too.
Yeah.
I thought that we were...
Because I got in on that because I asked the same question six months ago.
And I just, I want to just throw this out before we get too far along. Are we intentionally limiting it to council as opposed to like the other groups that publicly meet for the city?
Not intentionally. I think it's just written that way. I would open it up to everybody.
Right. We're still in the same thing.
If we're not meeting, then why should the zoning appeals?
Sure.
Civil service, if they're pressed to get, hit a test on or certify a list? I think it should be opened up to every...
So, yeah, the request was just for council. So it's drafted like that. If you'd like to open it up...
It was just a thought after reading when you wrote.
Keep going with it. No, Matt, you know, keep going forward.
I'm still, I'm still...
Would you want it to be drafted such that it would have to be unanimous vote of all the boards, commissions, committees?
That's what I thought needed to be discussed. Right. It's, I don't necessarily know that we should decide, right? It's up to, we really need to kind of brainstorm that.
Well, we could do this for first reading, and then you could draw up something that would enable us for all the others. Because if it's going to be a charter, it goes once. Otherwise, if we decided to do it later for the rest, we have to go back out to the voters a second time.
I would agree to that. It should be...
Yeah, that's a very good point, guys.
So why don't we just do first reading tonight, have Mark rewrite the draft so it includes it?
I would have asked for first read anyway, just because we have another meeting and it is the public opportunity.
Yeah, we have it up. It's May 3rd, not the 2nd.
So does anyone have any input into how they think we should allow that to happen? Do we say the committee itself has to come to council? Council can tell the committee? The committee can just...
I would not recommend doing that.
Thank you.
No, I think that you would not recommend...
Because that's going to create a scenario where council, at the whole of the meeting, to make a determination on whether another board can meet.
They work independently of a senate.
Should the administration handle the other boards and commissions?
Well, I would not recommend that either. I'd probably recommend kicking it to the boards and commissions to make their own determinations and maybe set their own rules.
But would require it being unanimous potentially?
Well, you could, you could insert that requirement and force them to vote unanimously or make them, or have them make their own rules.
Oh, I see.
If they want to do majority vote, you know, you could...
Right.
So if they make their own rules, they can, they can rule to make their group always virtual?
That would be limited by the way that's written in the charter, though, wouldn't it?
That's also up to you guys if you want to limit it or if you want to make it broad.
No, it's got to be limited still, I think. They can't take advantage of that.
Especially when you look at, let's talk Parks and Rec or Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals. Other people come to those.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It would, I feel it should have the same stipulations that we're going to, whatever they may be.
Have to be their group. And Jeff had this question last week, and I don't know if everyone heard the answer, but he asked Mark if it's, it's okay for us to make that decision via email?
Right.
And not have to call a meeting to call off a meeting?
Right.
And Mark said, yeah.
Yeah. So you cannot have, so under the Open Meetings Act, you cannot have a substantive discussion about substantive issues outside of a public body or about a public open meeting. By procedural items, you can discuss that on a very cursory basis.
Yeah.
And this is allowed, right now, has to be the state.
Right.
So we do this, we have taken the power within ourselves. We're allowed to do that. The state cannot say no.
Well, and yeah, Mr. Hoover had the clerks, I don't know what you want to call that, discussion email chain, had sent out ironically, two days prior to the last council meeting, a House bill from over, well over a year ago got resurrected, substitute House Bill 51. And now that actually just got through the House on some Senate amendments yesterday got approved. And that proposes to go and reauthorize virtual meetings through June 30th of this year. But if that, so if that happens...
But my question is, if we do this, we don't have to wait for the state to say, or the state can't say to us, no, you can't do this, we're not having virtual?
So if that, if that does get passed, then it'll probably be effective before this term and make it voted out.
Right. But if the charter amendment passes...
Then you will never have to worry about what the state does against it.
Which is really awesome, because if we have weather up here and the, you know, the weather's the state...
But I just want to clarify that it's the state.
Absolutely.
Well, it's not the weather that usually does it, it's this pandemic.
Right. Yeah, the weather's...
I just want to make sure that by law, we can do this and have no consequences with the state.
So there's some other communities that have just passed ordinances...
Okay.
...to authorize virtual meetings. The courts are pretty clear. If the charters explicitly contradict the Open Meetings Act or the Public Records Act, then that is effective in the charter controls. Just doing it by ordinance, I think, places the municipalities in a little bit more of a difficult situation.
Yeah. I just don't want to do this when the state says, no, you can't do it.
Right.
Going to want to get into that brew, huh?
Well, I assume once, you know, Mark looks into it and says, we can, we can do it, we can do it. And it's his fault if we're wrong.
No, no, no. It will, it will, it will be wrong if he's doing it.
Right. Exactly. It's not going to be wrong.
You guys are the ones doing it, not me.
Well, the voters, the voters are the ones choosing it. It's not us.
If they roll back all the legislation that we passed, you're going to have to redraft it all.
That's right.
So just to get back to your point, I mean, I get, I get your point of you try to make a, try to be here, but for your circumstance, you couldn't control that.
No, I had no control over that.
Right. So do we have the ability as for us as a group to say that's a circumstance that couldn't be controlled? Can we allow an individual to be?
So we would still meet, but we could have virtual participants?
Yes.
Kind of like when...
I thought that's what we were going to do.
Me, too. I do.
No.
Not currently, but, you know, for travel things, I, that's fine. Like, that can be avoided, but for your circumstance...
If he was too sick to come to council, why would you be, would you be well enough to, should you be on?
He's in the hospital.
Yeah.
Well, the hospital, yes.
The first, the first one, I was in the hospital. The second meeting I missed, I was, I might have been back in hospital.
I think that's all we need to discuss, because there's a fine line.
Yes.
And if we're saying, you're sick and you're in the hospital, so we're going to do birdful for you.
Well...
What initiative do you have to continue, I mean, at some point, to be here in person?
And you do have the ability to observe virtually.
Right.
You just don't have, you just don't have the ability to...
Right, you can't vote.
Which you did once.
Yes.
And he would have been allowed, if his audio was working, Mark, he would have been allowed to participate in discussion, right?
During that period, he was authorized by the revise code, yep.
No, I'm talking about when he was, he was observing the meeting from out of town. We were all here present.
Yeah.
Would he have been able to take part in discussion? He just wasn't able to.
Not vote.
His audio was not vote.
Yeah, no, because it was a budget meeting.
Okay. So he would have been able to participate in discussion for the budget meeting. He would have been able to participate in work session, just not vote on the floor.
Probably.
I don't plan on being in that situation again, but I thought that was part of the discussion before.
Right. But just in general, for when it happens. I mean, if, if that means that we can participate, but we can't vote, I think that's enough.
Okay. I mean, so...
It's all...
It would present an issue, having virtual participation. There could be an argument that that's not compliant with the open meeting then.
Okay.
Yeah. There's such a fine line. I think what's in here of public health emergency, which is what this thing is right now, or weather emergency, you know, if last Thursday had been the Thursday before where nobody could get anywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, when it affects all of us, yes. Absolutely.
But also...
Great point. Could be what it affects council as a whole or a border commission as a whole.
If there's legislation on the table, they come, wait another two weeks. Don't go virtual, just cancel the meeting.
So I have another...
And I put everybody's, you know, I mean, there's a way to do that, too.
I have another thought, just, and I just want to put it out there. The way it's written, it says it has to be unanimous of council. What if one of our members of council was unable to vote because they were in the hospital?
Just like Mrs. Tully said, then you would have to deter it to the next meeting.
No, it's not unanimous.
We can deter it.
They'd have to cancel the meeting, right? Because I'm just, I'm just bringing that up to see if we really want it to be unanimous or if we want to make it...
Or supermajority?
Right.
Supermajority.
I would, I would go with supermajority. I would be okay with that.
So what, is that four out of five? Or three out of...
Yeah, for you guys, because you're five, whether it's two-thirds or three-quarters, that's four people.
If you're incapacitated, then you can't vote.
Yeah, we're not going backwards.
Would it be easier just to say if you're incapacitated, then your vote would not be counted? Because if someone's in a hospital and can't participate, you can't hold that against everyone else, they're incapacitated, right?
Yeah, it is the full body. The full body, even if someone's incapacitated, are they...
Yeah. They're still a member of council.
What if, if we say that an incapacitation equals an abstention, which then it would go to the majority? Would that be unanimous?
We still have to enter an abstention vote.
We did this when he was in the hospital. We met, we voted, we moved forward.
But we weren't...
This is different.
If you were missing two, is when it starts to make a difference.
Right. This is different. The way that, the way that this charter amendment is written, it requires all five members to be in agreement that we won't require attendance physically. And if we're going to leave it that way, that just would mean that we, our only option in that scenario would be to cancel that meeting if we couldn't come in, which I think we're trying to avoid.
So saying there's a pandemic and one of us is sick?
Right. Which could be from the pandemic.
Yeah. Which is a very high chance that one of us could be sick in the hospital and incapacitated. We couldn't get a unanimous vote at that point. So what they're suggesting is do a supermajority, so four out of five.
Yeah. And I don't even know if it's technically, well, you know, you're communicating, you know, are you in agreement that this is a weather emergency and we should hold a virtual meeting? Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay. Move on to the next person.
So I like the idea that you guys came up with the supermajority, so you change that wording. Is everyone okay with that?
Absolutely.
So it'll be four out of five, at least four out of five?
How, how does the vote work since we would technically have to be in a...
So he's saying not vote. I think he's trying to make sure that we stop saying vote. We're in agreement.
The, most likely, the council president would poll everybody.
So same way, currently, the mayor can call a council meeting or three members of council can call a meeting. There has to be some communication to call a meeting. I mean, you can't just, a meeting just doesn't happen out of thin air. Same concept applies here. You know, there's some informal communication just for the purpose, are we going to do a meeting or no meeting? Here, it's, are we going to do a virtual meeting or not?
Good.
I think we got it nailed down.
If anyone has any more thoughts on that during the week, feel free to contact Mark about it. You don't have to pass it through me or anything like that, or...
Just to be clear, for, I think the consensus is to open it up to all their boards, commissions and committees of the city. As far as, is it let them make a decision, pass their own rules on whether they want to be unanimous or do what you guys are doing with the supermajority?
I don't know. I think, I'm trying to think of like what would happen in parks. I think supermajority would be better. I think some of our parks and rec people...
Have a standard.
Yeah.
Have a standard.
Gives us fewer words in the amendment, too, right? You can reuse the phrase. Use "and."
Yeah, might as well be consistent with everybody.
Okay. So yeah, if anyone has anything else to add to it, you can call me if you want to bounce something off me. You can just call, call Mark or email Mark and talk to them about it, and we'll try to get it. So the next, the next meeting, we should have this nailed down, how we got it.
Quick question, if I could back up. On ordinance 10, where you said there was going to be a language change, do we have to amend this? This is what was produced to the public 48 hours before.
Ordinance 10. No, so the only change there, instead of saying Huntington Bank, it's Honey...
Yeah, but she's saying that...
Huntington National...
Huntington Public Capital.
She's saying that the change that was made has not been there for 48 hours.
Yeah, we've done that traditionally, and I think, I think it made its way out, didn't it?
It did. It just hasn't been out there for 48 hours, is what she's saying.
Yeah, no, the ordinance itself has been out there for 48 hours. The only thing that changed in that, the name of the...
Is change it to Huntington Public Capital.
Yeah, but the ordinance itself has been distributed more than 48 hours ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, but we usually make the amendment on the floor so that the title says exactly what it should be. If it's after the, after it's been distributed.
You can if you want.
We should. We always do.
Well, it hasn't been introduced yet, so there's really nothing to amend, but that normally hap...
Introduce 10.
Correct. That normally happens after something's been introduced to council, and then it gets modified between that meeting and the next meeting. So here, you're just introducing it for the first time. It's already been distributed to council is the requirement, distribution to council more than 48 hours ahead of the meeting.
And it wasn't a substantive change either. It's not like, it's not like the spirit of the ordinance or anything changed, it was just some wording. So I get what you're saying, Jan.
Then it'll pass. I'm not sure we're going to...
Because I think you've done that when something's already...
It's tied off in Section 1.
I think, I think we've done it in the past when the change was noted here in the work session, and there was no, you know, prior to this, and we didn't change it, but I think we had enough noted.
If it's been public 48 hours before, any changes between that and the meeting were amended on the floor. And it's not a tough one, it's just changing it to what it says in the attachment, that Huntington Public Capital Corporation in the title and in Section 1.
Well, I'll make note of that, Jan, and make sure that going forward, and if this happens in future stuff, I'll take, I'll make sure that that's part of it. You know, if Mark sends us a fix, I'll be like, okay, let's leave it as is and make sure we amend it on the floor. We'll, we'll let this one go for now. Because it was not...
Yeah, and I don't think legally, from a legal perspective, I don't know if it makes sense to amend something that hasn't been introduced yet. With that caveat, you guys can do what you want.
All right. We'll, we'll look at it again next time.
It should be amended.
And then we have Jan and Dave, I think, doing the adjournments. And if anyone would like some apparel with the city seal, I think you see Vinny wearing it a lot, Jeff's got some shirts, I've got a shirt, who's got the city seal, it says city council.
Oh, my.
There's this huge catalog, and you can basically get that embroidered city seal on anything you want. You can talk to John, who's gonna, he'll take orders for it. So I'm going to leave this here on the corner of the desk there or in my mailbox, and you can go through it. You can take it home, bring it back, and if anyone's looking for it, just send an email, say, hey, where's that thing? There's a ton of great options in here. And then, are we, we're paying for those ourselves, right? No? Council's picking it up? All right, so don't go overboard. Be budget, budget conscious, huh?
You order.
We, we pay the money back every year that I've been on council.
Oh, we're funding your wardrobe, huh?
No, no, you've only bought me one. I paid for the other two myself.
That's true, that's another option for you if you want to get, get one thing or something. If you just want to go all wild and have a closet full of Macedonia swag, then that's on you. Mayor, anything else?
Mine's all been on the floor.
Any council, anything else?
I'd like to propose though, for John, because he works every day, that he be allowed at least two shirts on council's time.
If he wants them, he wants them.
I'm fine with one. I appreciate it.
Josephine didn't want them.
No, well, Josephine dressed to the nines for every minute. You couldn't tell that she was going out to class dinner.
John always dresses very nicely.
I mean, they have crazy nice stuff.
John's not wearing one t-shirt, are you?
Maybe underneath the.
7:30 PM, will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Ms. Ventura.
Here. Now I'd like to ask Tom O'Brien, the American Legion Chaplain, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
With bowheads, let us pray. Almighty God, we ask for your guidance as we begin our Macedonia City Council meeting this evening. Allow our council members to proceed with open hearts as they seek solutions to the problems that confront our community. We humbly ask Almighty God that you watch over our firefighters, those brave men and women who run towards danger, not away from it. They are the first to arrive when we are in need of assistance or in the midst of a health, health-related emergency. Keep these community heroes safe as they perform their selfless duties. Furthermore, Almighty God, we ask that you be ever mindful of the men and women who work to serve and protect the citizens of property of our community. These dedicated police officers are the backbone of law and order, and they serve our community in so many different ways. From patrolling our streets and neighborhoods to the complex investigations of heinous crimes. Our officers work tirelessly in pursuit in keeping our community safe for one and all. And finally, you've got our mercy, we ask thy blessing in that you guide us as we give comfort to our neighbors who may suffer from mental or physical disabilities. We ask that you bring them thy blessing of health and happiness that our community offers. Amen? And now please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, sir, always appreciate it. All right, next up on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, January 27th, regular council meeting, as submitted.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public comments, do you have any public comments this evening? I think not. Do we have any correspondence from the clerk?
No, sir.
Then we'll move right into pending a new legislation. First up is ordinance number 10, 2022.
I make a motion to, for ordinance 10, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Huntington Public Capital Corporation to finance the purchase of new equipment for the fire.
Mr. Verris?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to finance the fire engine and take advantage of the prepayment discounts. I received three bids, and this was the winning bid.
Thank you.
It's part over a 10-year period.
Any further discussion?
What's the total amount, Mr. Verris?
To borrow it?
Yeah.
Estimated to be no more than $800,000. And the prepayment is 727,480, something like that.
747,8480, 747,480.
Thank you.
And what's your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 10, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 10 carries. Ordinance 11.
I make a motion for ordinance number 11, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing two full-time positions of customer service specialists within the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'll ask, I always slaughter your name in IPOD. Wasniski? I was close. Can you give us an explanation, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So this position will be a budget-neutral change to our front desk operations. It does not eliminate positions from anyone who is currently working, and this change will build consistency, increase productivity, and also allow us to gain a more qualified employee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think it's really important that we get this, this passed. They're really suffering over there with being able to serve everyone at the, the rec center. And I want to applaud, you know, the team at the rec center and also working with HR and finance to get this plan together. So I, I thank you guys for that.
Now, the key here too is budget neutral. So you're adapting to what's happening with employees in the world and the difficulties everyone's experiencing. So your adaptation, and this is the response to that. So thank you for your efforts. And what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 11, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 11 carries. Ordinance 12.
I'd like to offer ordinance 12, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending sections one and two of ordinance 4, as 2021, which established the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1st, 2021.
So essentially, this piece of legislation just puts it into effect on the pay scales that it gives them the ability to do it with ordinance 11's passage in the simplest terms.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 12, 2022, and pass and post the same according to law.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 12 carries. Ordinance number 13.
I move to offer ordinance 13, 2022, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to sections 4.06 and 4.07 of the city's charter relative to meetings of council.
Anything you want to add to that?
Just to let people know, this is, the state has to approve the, whether or not the city can have meetings virtually. The state has approved it through July of last year, has not approved it since. But the city does have the ability to change the charter to allow council to call a virtual meeting. Now, charter amendments have to be voted on to the resident, by the residents. So this ordinance is for putting a ballot measure on the May 2nd primary ballot to let the, the residents decide whether or not council can call a virtual meeting. The process that we've been talking about is already different from what you see here. Mr. Gedetti will be writing up something else. This was really just a first draft of ideas between Mr. Finley and I. We also plan to, because there is, there is wording that is out in the public in the exhibit that came with this. We do plan to change it to make it available for committees and commissions to also have virtual meetings and instead of requiring unanimous vote from council, we decided to make it a super majority, which in our case would be four out of five. And we also, we are going to limit it to calling virtual meetings in a matter of health emergency or weather emergency. If any residents have any questions about this, you can email or call myself, or you can talk to Mr. Gedetti. This, the mayor really isn't in on this. He's, you know, at our whims, I suppose. But like I said, this is just for us to put this issue on the ballot, and we hope to get it worked out and passed by our next council meeting so it can be on the ballot on March, uh, May 2nd. So keep an eye out for that, and we're open to any questions from the public about that.
Excuse me, Ms. Brandt. Didn't, didn't we make the decision also to that vote by each individual board and committee has to be by super majority also?
Right, so the plan is to extend the, the vote. It won't be council deciding if a committee or commission will have a virtual meeting. It will be by a super majority of the committee or commission themselves. Good point. Anything else, anyone want to add? All right.
Mr. Gedetti, would you like to speak to the fact of local versus state?
Yes, speak to the legality.
Sure, yeah, so as Council President Brandt mentioned, the state really controls public meetings in Ohio through the Open Meetings Act. So we comply with that for meetings such as that we're having tonight. The Ohio Constitution has a home rule provision. It's known as a home rule provision, and it gives chartered municipalities home rule powers, which are actually able to explicitly contradict certain Ohio revised code provisions. One of the provisions that a charter can contradict is the Open Meetings Act. This legislature's free to propose a charter amendment, have the voters pass a charter amendment. That creates specific rules to be followed in the city of Macedonia.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll go into the mayor's report. The January 2022 revenue was $12,493.00. Like to ask everyone, we, we touched on this in our last council meeting, but when we get a, a big snow, please clean out around your fire hydrant if you have one in front of your home. God forbid it ever happens to you if we need to get to that fire hydrant. We want to get that fire out as fast as possible to keep you, your pets, your neighbors, everyone safe. So if that thing is covered by snow, the firefighters have to take extra time to dig it out to get to it. So if you have a fire hydrant in front of your home, please dig it out, especially when there's snow around it so that we can have that safety sense if we ever need to come with you, God forbid. Also, garbage cans. I know there's a lot of snow still in front of our yards. I'm fortunate enough to have a snow blower. I was able to push a little bit out to get my can in front of my tree lawn still, but if you are not, you have to put it in your, in your apron of your driveway. You cannot put your garbage cans in the road. There are so many things that can happen with that. You know, someone not paying attention blasted your garbage can. God forbid we get more snow and the snow piles coming around. It's very difficult when they're pushing snow and it's flying up in front of the blade. If your garbage can's there, it's not going to be there anymore, and you're going to have a heck of a mess on your hand that you're going to need to clean up. So I can't plead with everyone enough to say, please put your garbage cans in your apron, far enough away from the road, but close enough to where the garbage can pick them up and drop them into the, the garbage truck. So please be cognizant of that. Next thing on my list is the service building. So I mentioned this in the past about the, the new building we are proposing in Longwood Park. We've pretty much abandoned that thought at this point. Plan B is coming into fruition potentially. There is an existing structure that we may acquire to have our service department work out of. There's a lot of talks and things going out with it at this point that our law department's working with. But I do believe with the little bit of information I've gotten so far that this could be a very potential suitor for what we're going to utilize in the future. So the square footage of it and everything that is there, I think would be a great fit for our service department. And there'll be more to come on that, but we have to consider all data points on that. So more to come here in the near future. Second last thing is Happy Valentine's Day. It's coming up here, was that Monday, Brad? Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Make sure you get your loved one something nice. I'm reminding myself too, so that's, she's probably watching going, yeah, you better.
Put it in your palm.
No choice now.
Yeah. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put your phone down, drive your car, very dangerous. Okay, we'll go into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission meets next Wednesday at 6 o'clock in the activity room at the rec center. If anyone has public comments, we begin the meeting with that. That's all.
Again, not real close yet, but the JED Board will be meeting on Thursday, March 2nd at 6:00 PM, or I'm sorry, 6:30 PM here in this building here, weather permitting and nothing else comes along.
The cemetery, we'd like to say thank you to Sagmar Hills and Northfield Center. The truck, the plow truck is down, waiting for pieces and to be fixed. So both those communities came over and plowed the driveway so the people could come if they wanted to, to the cemetery. We've also put in, the Ring cameras have been installed. Hopefully never have to use them for any kind of disturbance, but they have been installed and they actually take pretty good pictures. So we get to see a picture of the snow before it was plowed and then after it was plowed. And then headstones, there have been several received. Obviously, they cannot be put in the ground at this point in time. Have to wait till they melt. If you have one that's come in, please don't hesitate to call Dan at the cemetery. He will confirm that, yes, it's there. And, you know, the timeline is depending on weather. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into Department of Forest. First up is interim director, Mr. Zernak.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been patching holes and fixing mailboxes. We've used about three tons of cold pads. We're getting the mailboxes, we're having an issue digging them out, so it's taking us a little longer for all the ones that are struck. Up there on the TV, you'll see a picture. They're about four-foot mounds, all ice. So it takes a little bit, be patient with us. We're trying to fix the mailboxes as quick as we can. We fixed about 130 of them.
Wow.
Since the snow started. So other than that, we have full salt burns, and that's about it. Thank you.
Hopefully, we don't need to use it.
Yeah, no more snow.
Good, good work, Service Department. We've had nothing but, but good things said about your work with the snow. And everyone had great things to say about the leaves, the snow. So you're really doing a great job.
Awesome, thank you.
Director Jalati.
Thank you, Mayor, hello, everyone. At our last meeting, we passed three pieces of legislation for some various paving projects around the city. The road program, the windmill, golf center parking lot, and Highland Road resurfacing. So the bid opening for all three of those projects is going to be on March 11th. So soon after that date, we'll have some contract recommendations for the council. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, when Highland Road is being resurfaced later this summer, we expect some traffic delays. So we'll continue to get that message out. End of report.
But even those delays are going to be less than what? Two weeks, I think they said?
Oh, you mean the total, yeah.
Total, the total timeframe of the delays potentially.
Correct, yeah. I would, I would say that in that two-week period.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Brad.
Mr. Brad.
I, I heard him, but I didn't hear him completely.
Tell him again, Brad, what's your last name?
Wisneski.
Wisneski, Wisneski, all right. I'm committing that to my memory. Mr. Wisneski.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I just want to say thank you to the council for supporting us in this new position. I really think it's going to make a huge impact for us and really change our operations in a very positive way. Also, I want to thank the Service Department. They've been super busy, kept us up on Thursday and Friday last week. And same thing, the amount of compliments we've gotten from all our members coming in on both the sidewalks and, and just the parking lot in general, just have been great this year. So thank you. And a little update on the memberships. We sold 410 in January, so it's a really good start for us for this year. We had new tables arrived, so this will help us with birthday parties and also some different craft and different kid programs we can run in the activity room. Something new we're doing this year is the MacTivity Guide. So be on the lookout for a postcard mailer. They'll be coming to every house March 1st. And they'll kind of be just a little save the date for the MacTivity Guide that's going to be launched March 21st. And the last thing I have is the field rental requests are starting to come in now, so we're starting next week with the allocation process for that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Director Verris.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind all the residents that the refund is online at the Finance Department page. The due date is July 15th. The last couple years, it was extended due to COVID reasons at Rita. They extended their return, but I don't think that's going to happen this year. So keep July 15th in mind. We've already started to receive some. So obviously, you can find it on your website. End of my report.
Thank you. Okay, Assistant Chief Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I just want to say thank you to you and council for approving of the purchase of our new vehicle. It's much needed, and we appreciate that. The only thing I would like to do is I'd like to publicly thank, kind of based on what you said about our fire hydrants, and I know that Chief Ripley also touched on that last council meeting. We would like to publicly thank the Summit County deputies that were on duty on February 8th for our house fire on Marwick. While one person was putting the truck in pump gear and dropping the hose, and another one was walking around the house, actually, the share, the deputies, two deputies on scene dug out the fire hydrant from the snow pan, the snow pile and allowed us to be able to hook to the fire hydrant. So just wanted to thank them. That's all we have.
So I guess that reiterates the point, and, you know, God forbid it ever happens to you, but there's a, a great point of the faster and the better it's there and available for them if they need it, you can get to it, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Police department's been slow, the weather kind of has, Police Department's been slow. The weather kind of has, you know, everybody's been staying in. We had theft today at the Commons, a short pursuit across from Home Depot through Walmart to Kohl's, maximum speed 18 miles an hour, and the two were taken into custody. Other than that, I've been doing some work at the high school, reference active shooter training. So I completed some of that today, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR has finally closed out 2021, so we are done with that and moving on, obviously, to 2022. We're making progress with our recruitment efforts and our benefits, our policies and procedures, training, and the HR management system. You'll be hearing about that for months to come because it's, they're fairly large projects. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Collins.
IT Department closed 24. Helped us take it since the last meeting. Major projects I've been working on is cleaning up a bunch of extraneous billing that we had for our ISP, as well as our phone lines, getting everything under an umbrella account. So it's going to make things a lot smoother for finance and for myself, as well as being able to review those accounts for savings. And then I also have secured a new technology to fix the issue over at the rec center. We're going to have a new 5G full duplex link that we'll own ourselves. So there won't be a monthly cost for that. We'll pay for the hardware ahead of time, and then it will pay for itself in roughly 16 months. And that's a lot better than anything we can get from leasing dark fiber from anyone else. End of report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good job, Cal.
Thank you.
All right, Director Goodetti.
Just thank council for their input on the potential charter amendment at work session. As Ms. Tully had mentioned, at the last work session, there is a charter review commission year next year. With that being said, when we had the last charter review commission in 2018, there were some recommendations that came from the administration. I'd encourage both the administration and council to take a look and see if there's any specific proposals you may want to have the charter review commission take a look at and provide input on. Obviously, it's early. We probably won't get that ball rolling until early 2023, but never a bad time to start thinking about it now.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to bring up one of our previous members at council, Shane Barker, has been hospitalized since December 31st. He spent quite a bit of time in the hospital. They released him a little bit too soon for lack of space and employees. He had a relapse. He had to have some surgery. He gave me a call tonight. Sounded great, doing much better. He hopes to be home by the end of the week. Started off with COVID and then just took off from there. He's gotten help from different people in the community, helping his wife Linda, who was also with the Summit County Sheriff's Department, and just tried to help her along because she was kind of like beside herself, not knowing what else to do. And he's, he told me to express his appreciation for anybody that tried to get a hold of him. He wasn't able to talk at all. He also told me that I can relay the fact that if his petitions are qualified, he will be on the ballot as a candidate for Summit County Council in a-
At large.
At-large seat.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have three quick things. One, the Nordona girls bowling. I used to love bowling in high school because you had to bowl your best game, and then you could just mess around for the rest of the phys ed class. You know, see how slow you could bowl, could you bowl it between your legs, those kinds of things.
Did you bowl at Northwoods?
Huh?
Same place that the team is bowling now, Northwoods?
Yeah, it's still over there.
Yeah.
Same place. That tells you how old that building is.
It's classic, Jan.
But they won the SL tournament in Norton. They beat, there were 12 teams, so they became number one. Second of all, wishing Mr. Vinnie a happy birthday.
I thought we were going to get by that. Thank you.
I'm not saying his age. I'm just saying he had a birthday and want to wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And then last but definitely not least, if you saw in the paper, we have a community member who has been an anchor for the Chamber of Converse for 30 years. Laura Sperano and I also worked PTA for a number of years. I just realized our kids have been out of school 20-plus years. Where did that time go? But she, she was, had the leadership. She really brought the chamber back to life. It kind of had stale-died 30 years ago, and she's retired and no longer the chair of it. But she and I have talked, and I said, well, we brought breakfast with Santa. We brought